At this time, we have fifty-six speakers. Do you want to...
Madam Chair. Well, two minutes at least, and maybe some of them won't be speaking the full-time. I understand all these are veterans, and I think it's my obligation to listen to veterans who've given so much over the years, so thank you, please.
Okay, you may go to either podium. You will have two minutes to speak. When the yellow light comes on, you have a minute left.
I'm Judy Coitz, residing in Rancho Calaverro. May I have a show of hands of mobile homeowners here who have an ocean view like this from their homes? How many people in the world, in case you want to see this, have an ocean view like Rich people have an ocean view like this. The rich developers and park owners leading this travesty to confiscate property owners' equity and leave us penniless. The character attacks on coach owners as free-ride scoundrels taking money out of taxpayers' pockets is only a cover for the real communist strategy to steal the property of Oceanside citizens. Park owners, developers, get our homes for free after they jack our rents up. This proposition is only one in many steps toward that end. Soon we'll know more than a million dollars was spent on advertising for Prop E. This card ad is very expensive. It is a blatant attempt at provoking voters' hostility toward fellow tax-paying residents of their own town. In fact, Miramar Park owners recorded 59 percent profit. Cavalier, 40 to 50 percent profit. All of these mobile home parks are making big fat profits, 40 percent and up. They live in places like Corona del Mar, Malibu, Laguna Beach. They, they have these views. We do not have these views. We deserve the right, I'm done, we deserve the right to keep the investment in our coaches like any other homeowners in town. Shame on you, Kern, Faleen, and Feller. This ad is an insult to the intelligence of voters. If anyone biases, they're crazy.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, the audience, I will be honest with you. I understand your emotions, I truly do. However, we have a long agenda after this. The audience applauding, I understand it, and I'd request that you don't do that because this drags it out longer, but thank you very much. I'll try that once.
Hello, I'm Sheila Kada, 5301 Village Drive, Oceanside, California. The League of Women Voters has a website, smartvoter.org. This is where you can go to get trustworthy information about all the propositions and candidates, so you can make an informed choice when you vote. As you know, the League of Women Voters is a very respected organization made up of all political parties, Republicans, Democrats, independents, so on. It is a nonpartisan, unbiased, fair organization, and the League of Women Voters goes over every proposition thoroughly with a total fine-tooth comb, and before they recommend anything, they really go through it. And the League of Women Voters support voting no on E. That's what I say.
Ladies and gentlemen, one more time, applause, booing. You know, everybody has the right to their opinion up here. Consider that. I understand we have emotions here, but please, I'm not going to be like Escondido and have you removed from the council, but consider it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Mayor Wood, council members, Dan Matlock, South Pacific Street. As I previously stated in this chamber early this year, I had the proud opportunity to return some of our troops home from Iraq. When we return these troops home after they risked their lives, we owe them a lifetime of respect, gratitude, and dedication, and that is no different for the World War II, Korean, and Vietnam veterans who have served in many years past. We as a nation, or a community, don't throw them under the bus, but this council has. So far up to now, a great deal of rhetoric, lies, and spin have been reduced to print in black and white in regards to Proposition E. But the people this agenda affects the most thought it was time for you, Mr. Kern, to meet them face to face. So why are these veterans and these widows here tonight? To appeal to the community for its support. Because you as a council have failed them in your support of them. You have thrown them under the bus. Ninety-eight percent of these people have never spoken before you, so please don't state later on that it's some old people complaining. These are new speakers before you, veterans and widows, whose lives will be impacted forever because of your actions, Mr. Kern. And please, for the new councilman on the dais, give them your undivided attention and respect. No texting or rolling your eyes that the TV audience cannot see because you're bored. So with that said, I would like to introduce just some of the fifty-four veterans and their widows from all eighteen parks that for the most part will only take five seconds of your precious time, with the exception of a few that want their full-time allotment. Mr. Kern, your agenda will never be seen as a badge of honor in this community. Shame on you, Mr. Kern. I urge the community of Oceanside to support our veterans and seniors and vote no on E and no on F.
My name is Eleanor Moore. I reside at Laguna Vista Mobile Estates. We are here to represent widows of veterans living in mobile homes in Oceanside. There are at least twenty-one widows living at Laguna Vista. Most of them are in their seventies and eighties, and three of them are in their nineties that live in the same block that I do. Vacancy decontrol has been very stressful for all of us, but it's especially difficult for these resident. We have appealed to this council numerous times with no positive results. Today, our appeal is to the voters of Oceanside and to anyone who is interested in helping us save our homes. To the voters, we ask you to join us and vote no on Prop E. If this proposition is passed, it is the beginning of the end of our homeownership, is the rich taking from the poor. We will lose our homes and become wards of the state. When this city council tells you that those of us under rent control will keep it until we, as long as we live in our homes, it's really not true. They don't tell you about the clause in the agreement that says that if the mobile home park becomes five percent vac, have five percent vacancy, that the owner can raise the rent as high as they want to, to all those living in the park. We are mothers, grandmothers, and widows and mobile homeowners. We have raised our families, helped with and served as caregivers for our parents and our spouses. We now just want to live in peace and harmony with the time that we have left. We want to keep our dignity, independence, as long as we can. I leave you with this thought: Would you throw your mother or grandmother under the bus for a buck? Thank you.
As usual, I have a lot of control over your applause, but again, please, ladies and gentlemen, keep it to a minimum or not at all, I appreciate it. And, thank you, I appreciate you, ladies.
Good evening. My name is Linda Walshaw. I live at Mission View Manor Mobile Home Park. In 2008, I purchased a manufactured home here at Oceanside. As a senior living on fixed income, I had been priced out of all other housing, not only in the city, but throughout the county of San Diego and the state of California. Needing to remain near my family and friends, I chose a location near shopping and the bus route because of my medical conditions. I also chose this location because a manufactured home must be located in a park here in Oceanside, and the park I selected was one of the few that would allow my son to either sell or rent the home to another senior upon my death. In 2011, three members of this council took it upon themselves to alter the contract I had entered into into the purchase of my home by passing the proposed vacancy decontrol ordinance amendment, a move which would devastate not only the financial security of my family, but that of four thousand other individuals and their heirs and families. This council's actions caused thousands of senior homeowners to take to the streets last June to obtain fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty-four signatures from voters to stop the actions of this council instead of listening to your constituents. You chose to ignore these thousands of Oceanside voters and instead place this matter on the ballot for June 5th at a cost to taxpayers in excess of ninety-three thousand dollars. Manufactured homeowners pay all administrative costs related to their communities, yet they have been wrongly accused of costing the taxpayers millions, in spite of the fact that Mr. Kern admitted to the press that costs to taxpayers are caused by lawsuits filed not by homeowners but park owners, frivolous lawsuits they continuously lose. Why then would this council choose to reward the very out-of-town corporate park owners who are costing the city money and turn their backs on Oceanside homeowners and taxpayers? In conjunction with what this council has done, these same corporate park owners have altered their parks' rules and regulations to take away our rights to rent out our homes. Homeowners now need permission of a park owner to sell their home. Approval of any listing agent, cannot list the home on the MLS or hold an open house. Public signs have been altered to say manufactured homes for rent instead of sale. Park owners must approve a potential buyer and give us permission for our heirs to ever even become a tenant in our home, wiping out the rights of our heirs. Legal counsel for park owners is quoted as saying he finds legal proceedings in these matters hilarious. Believe me, we as Oceanside homeowners, taxpayers, and voters did not find these actions funny. You have forgotten us, but we will remember you and whose interests you have served in this and future elections.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Sue Demmon. I live in Mission View West Mobile Home Park. I'm a widow of a Vietnam veteran. When my husband passed away seven years ago, he felt he was leaving me in a situation where I would be able to take care of myself after his death. Now, due to the actions of the council, I probably will not be able to maintain my lifestyle in my mobile home. We purchased our home with planning to stay there for the entire, our entire lifetime. People in the city, some people act like we are taking a handout from the city, the people that live in the mobile home parks. We are not. We are tax-paying citizens like everybody else. I pay property tax on my mobile home, and there are very few people that are on, quote, "welfare" or Section Eight in mobile home parks. We all pay our own way. We are not subsidized housing in the city of Oceanside. So please reconsider and think about the other veterans and widows in the mobile home parks, and this is a large portion of your affordable housing in the city of Oceanside, and without mobile home parks, you will not get some of the federal grants you need for future building and things in the city of Oceanside. Thank you.
Good evening, and I appreciate talking to the city council. I've been involved in this mobile home issue for many years. I don't want to go through it again, but trust me, what's egregious is small parks that are trying to redevelop and have their problems, mixing it with a real mobile home park. A real mobile home park, the owner of our park, which is a good park, Rancho Calaverro, and she stated that many people would want to buy that, and I said, "If it's such a tough business, why do they want to buy it?" And she just smiled. Well, you guess, because they don't need to raise the rents to have the revenue, a good revenue. But it does, with this law, it does give them the ability to raise those rents or get to where you can't even sell them, and that's been proven up north. I won't take all your time, I've got the evidence. If anybody wants to... I am a veteran, and I've lived in Rancho Calaverro for fifteen years, and if it happened today, I wouldn't be scared to take them to court because I know I could win. I know too much. But I'm concerned with my daughter, to protect her when she won't be able to, with things. I've tried to do it, but I wish to say also, there's a veteran in the park couldn't attend. He gave me my permission, he gave me his permission to mention his name, he was a major Army, William Dunn. He's another veteran, lives in our park. Sorry I took so much time. I could take five hours here without hesitating to educate you. Things you don't know about this, you all. Thank you very much.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. My name is Gerald Sullivan. I live in Rancho San Luis Rey. I'm a veteran of the United States Navy, served during the Vietnam era, and about another eight years in the reserves. I'm still working. I'm seventy-one. I live in a, you know, I can't stop working, not because I love it, which, but because I need to, to survive. I started thinking about five, ten years down the road and trying to envision what our park would look like if Proposition E passes. I saw a lot of empty spaces and a lot of empty coaches, and that scares me. So please reconsider. Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor. Chris Gao, President of Oceanside Manufactured Homeowners Alliance. I'm a veteran. I served in the United States Army, Vietnam era, and all these folks out here are like me, not all of them, but so many of them, and what I'd like to do at this moment, I would like to ask all the veterans, all the mobile home residents, to stand up while my friend here is going to sing a song to the council. So if you would, if you're a veteran, a mobile homeowner, please stand. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Mr. Mayor and councilpeople. My name is Flo Livers. I live in Llabaing Park at Miramar. I'm a veteran, and I was a Riveter in World War II. Vote no on E, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess I'm first.
You are.
My name is Max Alewski, served in the United States Army, nineteen-seventy through seventy-two. I'm surprised that a couple of you people are vets, very surprised. I live in Oceanside. I would like to vote no on E and F. I'd like the public to vote no on E and F. When I talked to you a while back, Mr. Kern, I mentioned to you that they were making a profit, the mobile home park owners were making a profit, at least one mobile home park owner was making a profit of sixty percent. I stand corrected, I apologize. It's more than sixty percent. Gary Faleen, you asked me about F. At the time, I didn't really know too much about F. I had made a mistake. I read about it, I learned more about it, and I would like you to know that I'm still against F. I think it should be no on F. The other thing is, I'm very surprised that the city of Oceanside hasn't had a bigger turnout by veterans. It's about vets helping vets. I read an article by Chip Dykes that basically said that vets in Oceanside were tired of people riding on their backs and carrying on their shirt tails, or something along those lines, and if a vet can't help a vet, vote however you want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Alfred Aviani. I'm a veteran. I was voted number one when I went, and so I went to the United States Army, nineteen-sixty-five to nineteen-sixty-seven. They voted me out in sixty-eight. June the fifth, I'm going to vote no on E and F. Thank you, gentlemen and lady.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I'm Rod Brasswell, a vet. I live at Laguna Vista Mobile Home Park. I flew fifty missions in World War II as a pilot during World War II. I got shot at many, many times, but they were not successful, and I won, and they didn't. I did not get shot down. Then comes the KFF of the city council to try to shoot me down, and they failed. I won again. They didn't give up, though. Now they put it on a ballot for us to vote, for us to vote in June. So I'm asking all the veterans and all the people who are voters to not shoot us veterans down on June 5th. Please vote no. Vote hell no on E.
My name is Ted Bemis. I served in the U.S. Air Force from nineteen-sixty-two to nineteen-sixty-six. I'm a veteran, living in a mobile home in Oceanside. I ask you all, please, to vote no on E.
I'm Jim Buck. I was a Navy pilot, and I live in Miramar Mobile Community. I would like to express my opposition to Proposition E, particularly, and F. I'm particularly concerned about the five percent item that was written into Proposition E, and I find it very difficult to believe that we are to trust in that we should not worry about it. I urge a no vote on Proposition E and F. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ken Jolly. Welcome. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a veteran. I live at Miramar, Vietnam veteran, nineteen-sixty-six to nineteen-sixty-eight. I know whatever I say here, and I wasn't going to say anything other than my name, and I know that whatever I say here is not going to convince you to change your mind. But what I am going to say is, when this election is over, the most important thing that you guys care about is getting reelected. That's the first thing you think about when you get elected, absolutely. We're not going to forget, and we're going to come after you. Every time you're up for a reelection, we're going to come after you. And if you think we're not, I'm a Republican, and I'm going to vote no, and I'm going to come after you, and you'll never get my vote again, or my family, or anybody in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Hi. I was Sergeant Barry J. Horton, Vietnam, in the Army. I'm wearing my flak vest for a reason. It's the F-F-L-A-K that we're trying to fight. We have to fight it from here and Vietnam. What a deal. Anyway, huh, yeah, let's see, where am I at here? Remember, vote no. We're not flakes, so no on E. And, to protect us below the belt, no VD. Thank you very much.
I got to follow this.
Yeah, you have to follow that.
I'm Don Rogers. I'm an Oceanside resident, U.S. Army. Welcome to all my veteran buddies, or as you're known in Oceanside, pawns. What a bunch of... Anyway, I'm here to represent a whole lot of veterans that aren't here, aren't, weren't able to be here. I'm here to state that this is an issue that has no good reason to exist, no justification for the money that this city's spending on it for the elections and everything else that's going on, and I'm also here to say, it's okay to be passionate about things, things that are important to you. That's natural, but this campaign has gone way beyond passion. I'm here to express my disgust at the lies that have been told and repeated by the pro-E faction, and those same lies have been repeated by people in the city council. We won't forget it. We won't forget that we can't trust you. We won't forget that you threw us under the bus. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Esther, boys. Robert Ryan, Sergeant, Air Force, sixty-six to seventy, sentry dog handler and trainer. I don't have too much to say. Within ten doors of where I live in my manufactured home, I have two World War II vets, I have a Korean vet, and three Vietnam vets, not counting myself. That's six out of ten. Maybe you can count that up. I would like to say that Proposition E is going to fail, and then some of you are going to try to get elected, and I don't think you will. We're going to work hard at that. So I would like to say that to the folks in my humble community that couldn't make it because of health reasons and so on, I'm sorry that you couldn't be here. To everybody else, I'd just like to tell you one thing: F no on E and F.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, please. I know you're emotional. I know I can say that until I bloom in the face, but...
Mayor Woods and City Council people, it's kind of nice to be here. I haven't been here in a long time. I live in Laguna Vista Estates. My husband was a veteran, and I'm a widow now. And when we moved in Laguna Vista, it was a beautiful park, and we did the whole thing, and we were very happy there. I didn't know he was going to die. We thought we had it made, but he did, and along with it went the twenty-three-hundred-dollar-a-month pension. So then having a business of my own in Oceanside and striving to keep on top of it. Most of the neighbors and people that I lived around were my clients, and they don't have a lot of money either. But we all are on one big family. We live in a beautiful park. I'm now paying for my coach that was a hundred thousand dollars. My rent is now seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to rent there, and I am also on the tax rolls, of which I'm paying a thousand dollars a year for my property taxes. So I just want to tell you that I kind of would like to hang on to what I'm trying to do and to stay there, but if things start going up, I'm already over the budget, and then I don't think I'll be able to sell the home, because right now, no one wants to buy a mobile home because they don't know what's going to happen. So everything is kind of like dead, and I would just like to have everything stay the way it is. Still paying too much, but I'm kind of happy where I'm at, and I wish you guys would leave us alone, okay? All I want to say. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I appreciate talking to the city council. I've been involved in this mobile home issue for many years. I don't want to go through it again, but trust me, what's egregious is small parks that are trying to redevelop and have their problems, mixing it with a real mobile home park. A real mobile home park, the owner of our park, which is a good park, Rancho Calaverro, and she stated that many people would want to buy that, and I said, "If it's such a tough business, why do they want to buy it?" And she just smiled. Well, you guess, because they don't need to raise the rents to have the revenue, a good revenue. But it does, with this law, it does give them the ability to raise those rents or get to where you can't even sell them, and that's been proven up north. I won't take all your time, I've got the evidence. If anybody wants to... I am a veteran, and I've lived in Rancho Calaverro for fifteen years, and if it happened today, I wouldn't be scared to take them to court because I know I could win. I know too much. But I'm concerned with my daughter, to protect her, when she won't be able to, with things. I've tried to do it, but I wish to say also, there's a veteran in the park couldn't attend. He gave me my permission, he gave me his permission to mention his name, he was a major Army, William Dunn. He's another veteran, lives in our park. Sorry I took so much time. I could take five hours here without hesitating to educate you. Things you don't know about this, you all.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. My name is Gerald Sullivan. I live in Rancho San Luis Rey. I'm a veteran of the United States Navy, served during the Vietnam era, and about another eight years in the reserves. I'm still working. I'm seventy-one. I live in a, you know, I can't stop working, not because I love it, which, but because I need to, to survive. I started thinking about five, ten years down the road and trying to envision what our park would look like if Proposition E passes. I saw a lot of empty spaces and a lot of empty coaches, and that scares me. So please reconsider. Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor. Chris Gao, President of Oceanside Manufactured Homeowners Alliance. I'm a veteran. I served in the United States Army, Vietnam era, and all these folks out here are like me, not all of them, but so many of them, and what I'd like to do at this moment, I would like to ask all the veterans, all the mobile home residents, to stand up while my friend here is going to sing a song to the council. So if you would, if you're a veteran, a mobile homeowner, please stand. (Music) Please vote no on E and F. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please. I know you're emotional. I know I can say that until I bloom in the face, but...
Mayor Woods and City Council people, it's kind of nice to be here. I haven't been here in a long time. I live in Laguna Vista Estates. My husband was a veteran, and I'm a widow now. And when we moved in Laguna Vista, it was a beautiful park, and we did the whole thing, and we were very happy there. I didn't know he was going to die. We thought we had it made, but he did, and along with it went the twenty-three-hundred-dollar-a-month pension. So then having a business of my own in Oceanside and striving to keep on top of it. Most of the neighbors and people that I lived around were my clients, and they don't have a lot of money either. But we all are on one big family. We live in a beautiful park. I'm now paying for my coach that was a hundred thousand dollars. My rent is now seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to rent there, and I am also on the tax rolls, of which I'm paying a thousand dollars a year for my property taxes. So I just want to tell you that I kind of would like to hang on to what I'm trying to do and to stay there, but if things start going up, I'm already over the budget, and then I don't think I'll be able to sell the home, because right now, no one wants to buy a mobile home because they don't know what's going to happen. So everything is kind of like dead, and I would just like to have everything stay the way it is. Still paying too much, but I'm kind of happy where I'm at, and I wish you guys would leave us alone, okay? All I want to say. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I appreciate talking to the city council. I've been involved in this mobile home issue for many years. I don't want to go through it again, but trust me, what's egregious is small parks that are trying to redevelop and have their problems, mixing it with a real mobile home park. A real mobile home park, the owner of our park, which is a good park, Rancho Calaverro, and she stated that many people would want to buy that, and I said, "If it's such a tough business, why do they want to buy it?" And she just smiled. Well, you guess, because they don't need to raise the rents to have the revenue, a good revenue. But it does, with this law, it does give them the ability to raise those rents or get to where you can't even sell them, and that's been proven up north. I won't take all your time, I've got the evidence. If anybody wants to...
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I'm Vernon Williams. I'm a 20-year vet, US Navy, driving submarines. My mom is a resident here in Laguna Vista. And I would like to remind you of the statement and the pledge that we said earlier today about justice for all. And this proposition is an injustice to veterans, to widows, to senior citizens, and needs to be voted against. It is sad when the property rights or the ability to stay in your home is threatened because somebody isn't making enough money when they're already getting a 60% profit. So again, please vote no on this proposition.
Evening, gentlemen and ladies. I'm sorry, I should support to say ladies and gentlemen, but I'm a US citizen by choice, not by default. I'm a veteran from Vietnam era. And I oppose Proposition E. And I ask everybody to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Sullivan. I'm a resident of Oceanside. I was drafted in 69 and served till 71 as a medical corpsman. I'm here to just ask you to understand, and not you, the council, I know exactly how each of you would vote. But those that are in the homes and watching this or may listen to it later, to vote no on E. The injustice, the inequity, the disingenuousness of this campaign has been incredible. There are personal attacks that are unbelievable. The amount of money that the proponents have spent that they've shown is approaching over $400,000. The money that the people that live in the mobile homes are fighting this with are in the tens of thousands of dollars. That inequity is part of the reason that all of us are here tonight. We may not have a lot of money. The opposition has tried to make it sound like we are some kind of second-class citizens. That if someone has savings and has been successful in their career, they somehow shouldn't be living in a mobile home. I'm here to tell you, you're wrong. And that the thousands of people that live in mobile homes in Oceanside will vote and vote no on E and F. And that when the time comes, it's not a hollow threat. We will remember what you've done.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Council members. My name is Ray Edwards. I'm a veteran of World War II in the South Pacific. In World War II, there was a tradition of putting a star, two stars, three stars in your window, depending on how many veterans there were in the family. Well, my mother had three stars. I had a brother fought in the Battle of the Bulge. I had a brother at Pearl Harbor on Hickam Field. And I, myself, was two years in Japanese waters. And luckily, I came back. I think the United States is the greatest country on earth. I think California is the greatest state of the 50 states. And I think Oceanside is the finest place I've ever been. But I'm very disturbed by what's going on now. When I moved here, two and a half years ago, I called the city of Oceanside. I do not recall who I talked to. But if I knew then what I knew now, possibly I would've made a different decision on where I lived. I'm an educated man. I graduated from Tulane University in New Orleans with honors. And every time I see the American flag, every time, I get a lump in my throat. I love my country, but I don't love what's going on here. So please, don't put all these people out of their homes or anything else. Thank you.
Good evening. You can be first.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And a councilman and councilwoman. I live in Oceanside. I'm an Army veteran of World War II. I served with General MacArthur, Army of Occupation. My company was selected to be his honor guard. And I'll tell you something. Jack, Gary, and Jerome, you guys are not very honorable all. Because we beat you, we had over 15,000 signatures, and you're still willing to spend $90,000 of Oceanside's money to defeat us. How in the world can you do that? Vote no on E and F. Thank you, folks.
Good evening.
Yes, members of the council. My name is Susanna Rae. I stand before you today as a widow of a second World War vet and as a Korean war vet. And I needed to say that not only am I a mobile homeowner, but I don't know whether I'm speaking against what so many have spoken of, of the lies, spins, and corruption that has beset this whole election. Or I wish to propose and support what the invocation said. So many times, I have heard ministers from this community give beautiful invocations and ask that you be fair, that you be just, that you do not indulge your own self-interest when you are dealing as a public servant. And yet, so many of you have done that. No wonder so many people have shame on you. And I am asking the citizens of the city of Oceanside to remember that this city is a terrific city. And to what has been given much is much responsibility. And that responsibility is to vote. And that responsibility is to vote out those who support special interests, those who advocate governance by special interests, by money, by corruption of the media, and by buying your own city staff and other persons who are not in a position for loss of their jobs to speak up and tell you that what you are doing is wrong.
I'm the mayor, madam, and councilman. I'm a veteran of World War II. I fought against the Japanese. I fought against the Germans. And I fought against the Italians. And all I gotta say is, you guys remind me of Hitler, Mussolini, and Tojo. If you think you're gonna beat us, you got a dream coming, buddy.
Please, please. My name is Les Watson. I'm a veteran. I live in Rancho Calavero Mobile Home Park. But I'm also a real estate broker. And right now, when or if the need comes for you to sell your home, you have the right to do that. You're trying to take that right away from us. Your taxes won't be increased, your property taxes. You can have a buyer. Our rent can go up double, triple. We won't have a buyer. Right now, if you want to sell your home, you have the right to do that. If we get a buyer on our mobile home right now, they have to be approved by the park. You have a right to have as many pets as you want to. We have a right right now to have one pet. We already have restricted rights. We are not traitor trash.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tim Burke. I live in Cavalier Mobile Estates. I'm a veteran from 68 to 70 war, served honorably. And I guess I'm gonna be more emotional than I thought. I'm really disgusted with the three council members that changed the mobile home ordinance. Decontrol is a farce. When we changed the council majority later this year, we'll get it back the way it was. Anyway, when I came home from deployment, a lot of the citizens used to call us baby killers, spit at us, and now the council's spitting at us again.
Good evening.
I'm Steve Stewart. I'm a resident in Laguna Vista Mobile Home Estates. I'm an Oceanside boy. I grew up here, graduated from Oceanside High School, and then a couple of degrees at San Diego State. The reason I'm here tonight is because I keep hearing the disparagement, the disconnection between, well, what does being a veteran have to do with Proposition E? It's not very tricky. All you gotta do is drive through the parks and see who's living there. I'm a veteran. I got veterans on both sides of me. I got a veteran across the street. And next door is a Vietnamese widow of a Marine Corps Sergeant Major. There's veterans all over the place. That's who's living in these parks. And shame on three of you for disregarding 15,000-plus signatures and choosing instead to put this thing, whole thing, up for an election costing the city $93,000. What kind of a fiscal conservative are you?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Mark. I'm not gonna give my last name 'cause I'm afraid of retaliation from the place that I live in. I'm a United States Marine Corps. Sometimes I feel ashamed for the sacrifice that my brothers and sisters gave to come back and have things like rent control where that shouldn't be. They devoted enough of their life to where that shouldn't be. The second part is, I live in a place, I used to live here when I was in the Marine Corps, but I live in a place in East County where I pay over $1,300 a month space rent. I... It's so bad there that when I called the tax assessor, I had my property taxes reduced, more than half. 'Cause he knows the park that I live in and the type of people that are running it. We have 50% of our park is abandoned, empty spaces. Thirty homes used to belong to people that couldn't afford the rent no more, and they were either unlawful detainered or just walked away. We can't sell our homes. No one will come, no real estate agent will come into our park because the people manipulated the market so that my $40,000 home isn't worth $20,000, let alone the fact that I can't sell it. I'm a senior citizen, I guess, now. I have my mother, 75, living with us, my wife. This is what's to come if there are no controls. These people are known throughout California as the land robber barons. Okay? I can't, until now, we haven't been able to get anybody in there, city, government, anything, to help us out. And this is what's to come if there are no controls or anything else. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Tim Sheen. I'm a volunteer, advocate for homeowners. Since 1996, I volunteered over 40,000 hours. I serve mainly for the veterans and the widows of veterans who sacrificed so much and continue to give to society. They fought for our freedom, and I fight for theirs, especially for freedom from fear and want. I've seen firsthand the emotional investment these people have in their homes and communities, and the horror stories of how stress affects their health and well-being to the point of causing strokes, heart attack, and premature death. I've even seen the burned-out home of a man in a park in El Cajon who set his home on fire, drove across the street and shot himself, but he set that home on fire so his park owner would not get it. And Mark failed to mention that his park owner currently has 14 homes for sale that they've captured from homeowners for little to no money. And that's what's in store for some parks in Oceanside, I'm afraid. And I just gotta comment on how irresponsible and reckless these false assurances made by Mr. Kern and the council majority are, that nothing is gonna happen to the current homeowners. There are several things that could happen if they're run by the opportunistic park owners. We hear a lot about bullying in the schools, but I can promise you, they'll be bullying in the mobile home parks if some of these park owners faced with the opportunity to raise the rents by $1,000 a month. They're gonna be pressuring veterans, seniors, and the other vulnerable citizens in these communities to move out prematurely so they can make that windfall profit damage sooner. Thank you. Vote no on E.
Good evening, Mayor. Pleasure to meet you earlier. We just moved to Oceanside, and I'm a veteran. And, excuse me. I gotta calm down because I'm really upset because I'm a disabled veteran, like a lot of the people back here. And you're messing with the wrong crap. Simple as that. Just to come back to haunt you, because I'm hearing some of you folks are veterans. And you gotta understand, you are targeting people that have limited incomes. They give so much, and a lot of them are disabled. And this is just the tip of the iceberg of the hurt that you folks are creating. But I'm getting to understand, and what I really don't understand, is the relationship you have with the Marine base. I mean, this is a military area. And you folks are tampering with something that is known throughout this country as a proud place to be from militarily-wise. And you guys are going after the people that done their services, have shown, you know, their service to the country. So no on E.
Good evening.
Mayor, City Council. My name is Ray Perez. 82 years old. I live in Montview West. I have a home there. And I spent 20 years in the service from 1947 to 1967, which included Korea and Vietnam. And I want to live in Montview West. Rent control will allow me to live there my final, final years in peace, dignity, and security. Don't let greed and pragmatic politics take me away from this old warrior. Thank you. Vote no.
Thank you. Please, sir.
Bob Ogul, native of Oceanside. Army and Navy Academy graduate, not Oceanside. Army vet. I wasn't thinking about this, but I was really happy to see all the Army vets here tonight. I thought this was a Marine Corps town. This is the hat I wore every day. This is pre-Vietnam. Headquarters company, 4th Engineering Battalion, 4th Infantry Division. That's not why I'm here. I'm here, I'm gonna vote no on E. We all know our positions. I am really here to talk about the false and misleading comments that are coming out of the yes-on-E proposition. They're telling this, this is good for Oceanside, yeah. The only people that will get any bit of it from E are mobile home park owners, and it's gonna cost the mobile home residents money. That's the only thing this is good for. They've commissioned a study that says having rent control has cost the city all kinds of property taxes, which is completely false. They're also saying it's cost the city millions of dollars to enforce this ordinance. Well, that is completely false. It has cost the money. It's all paid for by the park owners and the residents. And I think the city should say something about these completely false and misleading comments that they are making about these things. And I really object strongly to that. Thank you. I'm only yellow, son of a gun.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm the mayor and council. My name is Dana Corso, and I'm president of Action. And Action is an alliance of citizens to improve Oceanside neighborhoods. And currently, we have 42 neighborhoods. I'm gonna start by saying that I'm proud to be an American. I'm honored to be in this room with all of these American heroes. My father is a veteran. My brother served in the Navy at Desert Storm. As you all know, nobody messes with the United States and gets away with it. We are here today to bring awareness to the community that our very... We are here today to bring awareness to the community that our very own heroes, our veterans, the widows, family members, and our mobile home communities are at risk of losing everything that they worked so hard for, their homes. We need to support and protect these very folks who risked and some lost their lives for us. Mr. Kern, Mr. Feline, and Mr. Feller unfortunately have been bought and paid for by out-of-town developers and park owners, billionaires that would love to own all of Oceanside at our expense, at the expense of our seniors and veterans. Please, don't let them get away with this. The mobile home communities don't cost the taxpayers a dime. Yesterday, we learned the Nurses Union had endorsed a no on Proposition E. They are too fed up with the political corruption, and they wrote it in their flyer. Sheila already mentioned that the League of Women Voters also endorsed a no on E. It is critical that the Oceanside residents pay close attention and don't be fooled by these greedy corporations who are bullying our seniors and veterans. The lies and corruption in their mailers and mobile calls are disgusting. This has got to stop. On behalf of all of Action, and the 42 neighborhoods, and all of our dignified endorsers, including 100% support from our Mayor Wood and Esther Sanchez, I urge everybody to vote no on Proposition E and F. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to come up. A couple of quick items. I'm not a vet, but I've been raised by a number of vets throughout my life that have basically fought in every battle and every war, to the point where I've even taken my children back east to Gettysburg, Harpers Ferry, to teach them about other battles and wars that have happened. One of the things that I have had the opportunity of is being raised with understanding that, you know, to respect, you know, my elders, also respect the veterans that have actually given us the opportunity to have what we have, to do what we do, and to be able to speak freely. So I thank all the vets for that. Also, I've been told as I grow up to continue to fight. If I'm not gonna be a veteran, there's good causes and reasons to fight. This is a cause and a reason to fight. These seniors, these veterans that are here have actually paved the way and built the opportunity that we have to do what we do and to have this opportunity to get up here and speak. So once again, we should not vote on, we should vote no on E and F. And another thing is, I woke up the other night partly laughing, but then almost crying. Had a comic that came to my head, and I'm gonna actually write it up if I can find a newspaper that has the brass to publish it on our behalf. But basically, it was interesting. It was the City Hall building. And I've got councilmembers here yelling out for senior volunteers. You know, our senior volunteers that drive around in cars, the senior volunteers that help patrol the harbor, and I see them out there yelling, hey, we need you. We need you to get over here and help volunteer. And yet, here's that senior over there carrying his lazy boy chair out of his mobile home. I don't have time to come over and work for free right now, but I'll get there when I finish moving my mobile home. You know, we ask a lot of these seniors, but when are we gonna really step up and support them? And this is not right, what you're doing to them. So vote no on E and F. Thank you.
Excuse me. My name is Charles McVay. I live at 200 North El Camino Real, Oceanside. I'm a United States Air Force Strategic Air Command veteran. Mayor, councilmembers, and all who hear my voice, and you're the ones I'm speaking to because I know how the council is, is gonna vote. You have just witnessed a multitude of veterans and widow veterans.
Hi, my name is.
Who live in Oceanside. Rent control, mobile home parks. Pleading for you to vote no on Proposition E and F to save their homes. You sleep in peace, safe and secure in your beds at night, knowing your homes will not be taken, because veterans answered America's call when it needed its guardians of freedom, making many sacrifices, some the ultimate, their life, asking nothing in return. Now, they need your help to save their homes. On June the 5th, vote no on Proposition E and F, so they too can sleep in peace in their beds at night, knowing they will not lose their homes, because you answered their call in their time of need. Thank you. God bless America and its veterans.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Rick Castro. I'm from Rancho Calavera. My son is a Fortour veteran of the Iraq War. His name is Adam Castro. And the following is a presentation. I wanna thank the veterans who participated, and Chris Wilson, who helped me in on this. So you'll see this present. Hi, my name is Rick Castro. I'm a homeowner in one of Oceanside Mobile Home Parks. One of the core issues underlying Proposition E, which appears on the June 5th ballot, is that of property rights. Homeowners are property owners. We pay property taxes on homes placed since 1984, just like all other property owners. Unlike a rental home, we are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep, not just of our homes, but also the lots we rent from the park owner. We spoke to a few of the approximately 700 veterans who live in Oceanside Mobile Home Parks. Here are their views on the issue of property rights, in their own words.
I can't move my house. There's no wheels under it. It's not like a trailer.
The homeowners that rent the space have a greater vested interest in the park than the park owner.
When my husband was forced to retire because of his heart condition, we did the add-on and enlarged the hall. Came in and we remodeled the hall. We have to maintain our own lots. The park, that's not their responsibility.
Ownership of the park here seems to feel that he exclusively owns the park. And yet, we own all the housing. The value of this park is not because he owns the land. The value of this park is because he's got mobile homes on it.
Mobile homeowner, uh, park owners are likened to utilities, in that they have a captive market. And we must have regulations and things to keep them from gouging the homeowners. It keeps the balance of power. The homeowners are the one that built this up and has made it what it is.
The value of our mobile home park is based on the property that's on the park. If you were to suddenly remove all the housing, the mobile home park might be worth a couple million. But if you retain the housing and sold the park, it would go probably between 20 and 30 million dollars.
They own the ground, but I own this house that's sitting on it. I can't take it somewhere else. Can't move my house. There's no wheels under it. It's not like a trailer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And vote no on Proposition E and F. Protect our property rights.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Chris Wilson, I live on Harbor Clefway here in Oceanside. I wanna ask the question, what do we call people who threaten the body politic in order to achieve political goals? Because that's what the park owners have done. They've run up costs against the city by filing frivolous lawsuits, lawsuits that are frivolous by the admissions of the people that back Proposition E. We call those people terrorists. The policy of the United States is not to negotiate with terrorists. It's shameful that the City Council of the city of Oceanside has chosen to do so, and I would urge the citizens of Oceanside not to negotiate with terrorists and vote no on Proposition E. Thank you.
That is all the speakers.
That's all? Come up for the mic. I don't know what you're saying.
Thank you. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I'm listening. But after hearing all of these testimonies.
Need your name and that name.
Oh, my name is Susie Shroyer, and I live in Laguna Vista. I was born during World War II in Germany, and experienced as a very small child for six years the terror of hearing the planes coming and the bombs stopping and not knowing whether we come out of it or not. I was too small to know what was going on. But I did feel the fear and the terror and the insecurity for six years, never knowing what that felt like.
Stay near the mic.
And so, I never forget the day, though, I was too small what was going on, but I never forget the day that the Americans came into our town and liberated us from the terrible dictator that we had. And I want to thank every one of our veterans here for liberating us and me, for if they hadn't come, I don't know what would have happened to all of us over in Germany. I came over to the United States, and I made my citizenship as soon as I possibly could. I'm a proud citizen of the United States of America. And now, I've lived, come here to Oceanside, and I felt this horrible, intense fear and anger when this issue came up about threatening people's homes and their lives. At first, I didn't relate it. I figured it out. It was my childhood experience that I was so able to relate to everyone that is affected by this issue, because as a small child, also as a small child, I didn't have a voice. I didn't have recourse. I didn't know what was going on. But now, I am at the other end of my lifespan, and I'm threatened again with the safety and security of my home by three members of this council. And that is what I'm resenting, that is what I'm fearing. I'm having nightmares again. It brought up all these old fears, six years, that I have experienced. But I again want to be proud, I want to say that I'm proud of everyone that participated in liberating us from Hitler.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Yes, five seconds, please. Five seconds, come up. We've heard quite a few tonight. I'm not sure you could top this.
Off around again. I neglect to say I am a veteran, U.S. Navy, 1938 to 45. I served on the Lexington for three and a half years. Fortunately, I stepped off where she went out and got sunk, May the 8th, 42, at the Coral Sea. Then I went on the Enterprise. Anyway, I just wanna let you know.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, first off, thank you for your time and effort. A lot of you here, I understand the emotions. I truly do. With that being said, we're gonna take at least a five-minute break for us to make a bathroom run.